Let everybody know that the meeting will be recorded and may be televised live. Would everyone please rise for the T such allegiance? Mrs. Carsley, would you please lead us this evening?
I pledge allegiance to the republic into which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our own.
Delegates and visitors.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I would like to introduce Ava Bertino, who is the class president of grade eight. Ava, if you would be so kind to come up and sit right here, that would be great. She has a presentation along with her class offices of the eighth grade. As you know, the eighth grade now resides with the high school, eight through 12. This is our first year that we've actually assigned class advisors with grade eight in order to -- that will follow right through the whole high school cycle. And so I believe that they are -- want to jump right on their fundraising efforts. So I'll turn it over to.
Yes, we do. By starting our fundraisers for this year, we want to do an eighth grade Halloween dance for eighth grade. And the reason why we want to do this dance is to fundraise for our Washington DC trip. A lot of kids maybe can't afford or can't go to Washington DC that really deserve to go. So we want to make sure that everybody who deserves to go can go because it's such an amazing experience to go to Washington DC. And I think that every student who honestly deserves to go can go. So we've worked out these details in the Halloween dance. But first, I'd like to introduce my student council. We have Matt Corielli, our vice president, Russell Nichols, our treasurer, Ali Fahani, our secretary, and Faith Hunt, our videographer. Back to the Halloween dance. We have a location already, the Winthrop Yacht Club. We plan to rent out the upstairs floor. And through parent donations, we are able to completely fund this room upstairs. The price is $150, which is a fundraiser price. So yeah, that's how we're going to get that room. We also have a DJ for our Halloween dance because we really wanted to have a lot of music at the dance. So our DJ is DJ Kurt Mular. We actually -- Russell, if you wanted to explain the DJ.
My mom got the DJ for us for the dance because to start off our fundraiser, she wanted to give us something to start off the year with, so she donated the DJ for us.
We actually -- we're so grateful for that also. And we want to include pizza and drinks and candy, of course, for our Halloween dance. We plan to have the times for 7:30 PM to 10:30 PM, or 10:00, depending on whatever's better for the students. It's going to be held October 30th, the day before Halloween, just so we didn't want to have it on Halloween because we know a lot of kids are busy trick-or-treating. And also with the funds, I'd like to call Russell Nichols our treasurer once again just to explain our funds because we actually got a really generous donation from his uncle's foundation, the Eleven Fund.
We've received a $400 donation from the Eleven Foundation in memory of Michael J. Mason, who passed away in 2011. I requested the donation of $250 to 500, and they gave us 400 to spend on food, decorations, drinks, and other things that can make this a really awesome event.
Right. And so those are our funds, but the only thing is that those aren't physical funds yet. We're going to have to use our pre-ticket sale funds and other stuff to initially buy our products and stuff like that. And then in the end, we would be -- so we'd give the money upfront and they would just give us the money that we spent back because that's how their donation process works. And also, we plan to take pictures of the dance, and we're going to be selling these pictures for $3 each in our videographer, Faith. Do you want to explain more about the pictures of the dance?
We plan to be having a photo booth in the corner of the function room. I'm gonna have a tripod that Ava's gonna donate and my camera that I've had for about two years now. And we're gonna be taking pictures of group pictures, or if someone just wants to have a picture with their best friend, or anything like that. It costs $3, and then the weekend -- over the weekend, we would be printing all the digital photos at CVS and then bringing them to the kids that got them and home run the next day.
Right. So we would print out the pictures and whatever's left, we would obviously subtract the amount that they have cost us and add on our funds. The rest of the money goes to us. And so if there's anything else you guys like to know about the dance, I would love to hear it, or any questions or concerns.
I have two questions. Do you have chaperones for the dance?
Oh, yes. We plan to have a 10 to 1, student to adult ratio. For every 10 students, there would be one adult chaperone. So we already have some teachers who would like to chaperone, and all of our parents would be there also. And so we have a couple more actual student-parent chaperones that would also like to chaperone. So I think we're also.
And my other question was, in your email, you had mentioned a police detail. Do you know whether or not you need to have a police detail?
The Winthrop Yacht Club does not require a police detail for -- we expect at least 80 to 90 students out of the eighth grade to show up. The Winthrop Yacht Club does not require one, but if the school does, we can definitely find a way to add that in.
We do not have a policy with regard to a police detail.
Okay. So if the Winthrop Yacht Club doesn't require one, then I don't think we need one.
Okay. Any other questions?
I just want to make a comment on it. It's -- I didn't realize right off the bat, again, that it was for the Washington DC, which I think is a phenomenal idea because we've been looking at ideas in the past. And if this is gonna help contribute to students being able to participate in Washington, then by all means, I think it's a great idea. Also, what is the ticket price?
Oh, right. So the tickets to get in, you can buy them at lunch or at the door. We plan to print them out sometime this weekend and sell them next week. They are going to be $10. Same price for at the door and at lunch.
Any other questions? Ms. Bertino, you impressed me you did all of that without any notes.
Thank you.
I couldn't do it.
Very creative idea.
Thank you.
Good luck.
If nobody has any other questions, then I would, at this time, like to take a vote on this. Before we have a motion, however, I -- we have a school committee policy that states
Yes.
Ms. Polino?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes.
that we will allow for a Valentine's dance and a moving -- an end-of-year dance.
Mr. Sprowder?
Yes. Hundred percent. Very good.
Thank you, Sullivan.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And this would be an exception to that.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Now, you could make an argument that it's not going to be held at a school, so it really
You can -- you're certainly more than welcome to stay, or you can go.
You might want to go. doesn't apply to the policy. But just to be sure that everything is okay, I'm going to ask the committee if they would Next item is public comment. Do we have public comments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. vote to override the policy and approve the dance at the same time. Next are the minutes from October 6th for approval.
Bye, Felicity.
Bye.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes? That will require a 75 percent vote.
Motion.
Motion for Ms. Sullivan, second. And how many members do we have here today? I'll second it.
You're right here.
Five.
I can still second it. Five members. Okay. So I'll -- go ahead, sir. Any questions or comments on the minutes?
I was gonna make a motion, but go ahead.
If not, we will take a vote. I'm making a -- I didn't make a motion yet. All in favor of passing the minutes, please say aye. I get the feeling, Ms. Bertino, you're going to have this dance.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions?
Aye.
I make a motion that we override the school committee policy on the number of dances for Ms. Polino, President Gill, and I abstain. this one dance, and that we approve the dance and the fundraising. Next item is the MCAS presentation from the Arthur T. Cummings School. I see that Mr. Harity and Mr. Curly are here. President Gill, seconds? Mr. Superintendent, do you want to say anything before they speak, or?
Yes.
Ms. Haynes, would you call the roll, please?
Yes.
I do not need to.
Mr. Gill?
Yes.
I will have it under control.
Mr. Harity?
Hi. Thank you very much. First, I just want to thank you all for giving me the opportunity to speak. This is my first year as the principal of the Arthur T. Cummings School, and it's truly a great honor, so to be here tonight and to share with you the results of the school and a lot of our initiatives that we have started to put in place to move our school forward. So I would like to invite Mr. Curly to take my seat here while I stand at the board and kind of go through this point by point. So the agenda for tonight is to do the data overview, talk about some of the key terms. I know that the school committee has gone over many MCAS presentations, but I just want to, you know, start from the beginning for any parents or community members that are at home that want to just have a firm understanding of where some of the key terms are as we start to analyze this data. We'll talk about some significant findings with the data. We'll talk about areas targeted for improvement. We're moving to action steps for grades four and five, action steps for grades six and seven, and then we'll wrap it up with a quick conclusion. So data overview, each year, the administration presents MCAS data from the previous testing period. This presentation will encompass data from the Arthur T. Cummings and the Winthrop Middle Schools. We're in a unique position this year based on the construction project and the merging of four schools into three schools. And so our data from last year was really aggregated into grades three through five and grades six through eight. And I thought that the easiest way to present that data, considering that we have the majority of those students in our school right now, would be to just present the results that way and really target our students that are in our current building when we refer to our action steps. Also, Ms. Pearson's here tonight, and she's going to be doing a more thorough, in-depth analysis of grade three at a later date, so you have that to look forward to as well. So key terms, the median student's growth percentile, or SGP. I put this first. This is, to me, something that's extremely important. When we talk about the SGP, that is a student's growth from year to year. So if a student had a, you know, a 260 in sixth grade, then what is their growth going to be in seventh grade? And this number's really important because we're really focusing on all of our students when we talk about SGP. And so if they had a 260 last year, all the students that had a 260 last year, it's going to compare them this year with what their score is. And if their score is greater, then they're gonna have an SGP probably higher than 50%. Our composite performance index, this is the CPI. This really talks about overall proficiency rates, so how many students you have that score proficient or advanced. The PPI, the progress and performance index, the annual progress and performance index is -- combines seven, up to seven indicators. For our grade level, it's five indicators. Basically, what this looks at, it's a measure of the improvement that a group makes towards its own targets over a two-year period. So the five indicators that we have in our school are narrowing proficiency gaps in ELA, math and science, and our growth in ELA and math. The cumulative PPI encompasses the last four years, with rating the recent years as the most important. And with your cumulative PPI, that is how your school is classified into the levels. The state of Massachusetts has five levels for school, one through five. The highest-performance schools are Level 1 schools, and about 80% of schools in Massachusetts are rated as Level 2 schools. And then schools in the lowest, 20%, as far as proficiency levels and meeting the subgroup targets, are rated either as 3, 4, and 5, depending on what level of supports that they need. And a lot of that has to do with how many students are participating in MCAS, how the subgroups are doing, and so forth. And the state really targets those Level 3, 4, and 5 schools for additional supports from the state. For a school to be classified into Level 1, which is where we want to be, the cumulative PPI for both the all students and the high-need students must be at 75 or higher. So here's a rainbow chart, and this gets a really nice visual representation. I know these are difficult to read if you're watching on TV, but I gave all of the school committee members a copy of the rainbow charts, and I think this is a very simple way to see where our schools are either meeting their gaps or not meeting their targets. And so when you look at, over the last four years, you can see that, you know, just looking at all of our students at the Cummings School in grades three through five, this year, in 2014, we had no change in our CPI for ELA. We improved, but below target for our student growth percentile. And right here, this purple color, what you'll see there is if your school earned extra credit points. And so extra credit points, you either decrease the percentage of students that were in the warning category by a certain amount, or you increase the students in the advanced column. So what you can tell right away is we have some blue. So the areas that we have blue, that means that we're above target. So that -- those are areas that we've really demonstrated some great progress, and that is in science and technology. And we also earned extra credit points this year in our number of students that moved into the advanced category in fifth grade science. So that's a big hats off to the teachers in the fifth grade and the work that they've been doing. You can see that there's a dramatic increase from 2011 to 2012. When I talked to the teachers about that, and I said, "Why did we have such a big increase from 2011 to 2012?" Well, we had curriculum textbooks that were delivered in 2012 that were aligned with our standards. So you can see what a dramatic increase having the right resource in a classroom can make for our teachers. Another key to this is, if you move to -- you can move to the next slide, Mr. Curly. This really tells where we're struggling too. Because if you look at the red in our science, that tells us that our low-income students, because this chart represents our low-income students at the Arthur T. Cummings School, and those students, like we talked about before, also need to be reaching the 75 PPI to make progress. Our low-income students are currently at 47 PPI. So that's an area that we really want to target at the elementary school, from grades three to five. Click on the next slide. So this is our students with disabilities at the Arthur T. Cummings School. This is another extremely important subject. You can see that our students with disabilities, something that really jumped out at me here, our students with disabilities are still in the blue. So when we're saying, okay, our students with disabilities are struggling in a lot of different areas, but one area that they really do well in is science in fifth grade. So what are we doing with those students in science in fifth grade? Well, they're included in all of their classrooms. So this is a time when we really are functioning with a full inclusion model, and our students are rising to the occasion and really progressing. So that's something that we'll talk about a little bit more in further detail. But you can see in our other categories, in 2014, we either stayed the same, or we improved below target. So students at the middle school, this is, this represents students in grades six through eight. Students at the middle school, about the same. So you're seeing that we stay, either stay the same, or we increased below target. We were able to earn some extra credit points. Our percentage of students decreased in the warning category for math, which is tremendous progress. And that has a lot to do, once again, with a lot of the hard work that our teachers are doing in the classrooms. Our low-income students at the middle school level, so grades six through eight, you'll see that the PPI for these students is at 70. So like I talked about before, we want that PPI to be at least at 75. So our students at the middle school, ranging six through eight, are achieving at a higher rate in the low-income category than our students in three through five. So what's really nice about this is now that we're merging fourth through seven, you'll see that we have a little bit of balance. Our students with disabilities do better at the elementary school. Our students in low income do better at the middle school level. So now that we're going to be aligning our school four through seven, hopefully, we'll be able to share a lot of those resources and balance out our strengths. Our students with disabilities at the middle school, you can see that the CPI is in the red, that's an area that we really want to target and work on this year, and are, and we're improving below target in math. So significant findings, based on this data and additional data that we took a look at, is the Arthur T. Cummings in middle school both remain rated as Level 2 schools. The Arthur T. Cummings School is rated in the 31st percentile, and the middle school was rated in the 38th percentile. So when you look at those percentiles, they're not great. They're not where we want them to be. But the 31st percentile, the Arthur T. Cummings School was a Level 3 school in 2010. And according to DSEC, the Department, the District School Assistant Center, we were in about the 2021st percentile in 2010. So we were able to jump about 10 percentile points in the last three years, which, once again, is due to the tremendous work by our teachers. Also, significant findings, the greatest area of growth for the Cummings School was in science. You can see that was represented by our reaching above, improving above our targets, which is a great target. In science, students demonstrated above-target performance in each subgroup, with the exception of low-income students. Other significant findings, our ELL students are doing very well. They exhibited strong growth with an SGP of 61% in ELA and 52% in math. Grade 3 ELL students increased their proficiency levels from 15% in 2013 to 41% in 2014. That is a tremendous increase. Also, non-high-need students in fourth grade exhibited an SGP of 59%. Like I said before, between 40 and 60 is about average growth. Anything above 60 is considered high growth. So our students, our ELL students, are at 59%. When you look at our students with disabilities in seventh grade, they have an SGP of 63%. So there are some really positive things that are happening. All students in eighth grade showed a strong SGP of 68.5% in math. The non-disabled students showed an SGP of 73%. The Spanish-Lasagna students showed an SGP of 74.5% in ELA across all grade levels at the middle school. The cumulative mathematics results for all students at the Cummings School increased in the proficient-advanced category from 53 to 56%. See, now, we really need to talk about some areas that we're targeting for growth because we know that we can do better, and we know that we want to be a Level 1 school. So the areas that we're targeting for growth, right now, the biggest thing that jumps out at us is math. So you can look at this right now, and you can tell that we have too much pink and too much red. Also, if you look here, in six through eight, once again, needs improvement is pink, red is warning or failure. We have too much pink and too much red. When we look at our state comparison data, if you look at the state, how the state did in grade four, they had about 20% advanced in grade four. The Arthur T. Cummings had about 21%. The proficient category, the state was at 32. Grade four, we were about 28. Needs improvement, 36 for the state, and 43% for grade four. So that really tells us that we need to move these students into this category, and we really want to bump up our advance as well. If you look at grade seven data, the state had about 17% in the advanced category, and WMS had about 13% in the proficient category. You can see that the state had 33, and we had 25. Needs improvement, the state had 26, and we had 35. And the warning category, the state had 24, and we had 28. So this was one thing that really stood out for me when we went and analyzed the data. This is our performance of our special education students, and this is just taking into account one grade. So we just looked at, you know, this is pretty consistent across grade levels, but this represents our grade six special education students. And you can see right there that 78% of our students are in the warning and failure category. So that's an area that we cannot let go on from year to year. So when we look at math in grade six as well, we can see that students with disabilities, 78% in the warning or failure category, and we have 49% in the state category. So that, those are huge red flags for us, and we have to be targeting. And we have some actions and initiatives that we do put into place that I'll talk about in a minute. Growth comparisons, this is a nice chart because it shows on the left, you'll see the proficient along, and you'll see the median SGP right here. The yellowish-brown dot represents our non-disabled students at the ATC in ELA, and the X right here represents state performance. So you can see that our non-disabled students are right in line with where the state's performing. This black dot is our disabled students at the Cummings School, and this blue X right here is the state for disabled students. So you can see that our proficient categories are below the state. This is the same chart for low-income students. This is at the middle school level, the same chart for ELA, and same chart for math. This represents our low-income students at the middle school. So now, what are we gonna do about it? So that's, you know, we've identified the areas that we need to improve. We've identified some things that we really want to work on. So what we've done this year is, at the ATC, we've added additional inclusion classes for fourth and fifth grade. When we go back and we look at our science data, right there, that tells us that when our students are included and our students are given the opportunity to be challenged with the rigorous curriculum and the supports that they need to be successful, that they do achieve at a high level. We are doing targeted intervention based on data. So the Scholastic Reading Inventory, DIBELS, and other various literacy assessments are being implemented as we speak. We progress monitor students. We have students in response to intervention models for grades four, five, six, and seven. We have meaningful professional development scheduled for this year. We're looking at a model called the responsive classroom, which has a research base of improving scores for low-income students. And we also are looking at a writer's workshop model for improving our writing. One area that we saw when we looked at data was that our writing can really be improved in a lot of different areas. Our open response, our short-answer questions, those are areas that really transcend across different subjects, and that's something that we can improve with some focus on PD and writing. Also, our integration of technology. We've had some teachers that have had phenomenal success with integrating technology in the classroom, using programs like Khan Academy, Think Central, and Ten Marks. They've been able to demonstrate some terrific growth. We have, we've gone from having about 25 computers in our school, now we have about 75. So we're able to, you know, by tripling the amount of computers we have, we're able to really provide our students with some technology that has improved and increased their performance. The teachers have been very eager to learn about this technology. They've been utilizing this technology consistently. We have online calendars where they can go on and sign up to reserve the Chromebook cards that we have. And those calendars, as soon as we posted them online, were filled up by the teachers. So that tells us right away that teachers are ready to embrace the technology, they're ready to learn how to use the technology, they just want more of it. So it's becoming this resource that is scarce and something that we really need to make sure we have available for our teachers. Some other action steps at the ATC, targeted math intervention. So something that we've done, we've had a lot of success with our RTI model in ELA. We're going to roll out an RTI model in mathematics. We've already integrated additional support personnel into classrooms during the mathematics block to provide additional supports and break down the different subjects, and that's something that we can improve with some focus on PD and writing. Also, our integration of technology. We've had some teachers that have had phenomenal success with integrating technology in the classroom, using programs like Khan Academy, Think Central, and Ten Marks. They've been able to demonstrate some terrific growth. We have, we've gone from having about 25 computers in our school, now we have about 75. So we're able to, you know, by tripling the amount of computers we have, we're able to really provide our students with some technology that has been proven to increase their performance. The teachers have been very eager to learn about this technology, they've been utilizing this technology consistently. We have online calendars where they can go on and sign up to reserve the Chromebook carts that we have, and those calendars, as soon as we posted them online, were filled up by the teachers. So that tells us right away that teachers are ready to embrace the technology, they're ready to learn how to use the technology, they just want more of it. So it's becoming this resource that is scarce, and something that we really need to make sure we have available for our teachers. Some other action steps at the ATC, targeted math intervention. So something that we've done, we've had a lot of success with our RTI model in ELA. We're going to roll out an RTI model in mathematics. We've already integrated additional support personnel into classrooms during the mathematics block to provide additional supports and break down the classes into small group formats that students can get the help they need based on the level that they're at. And also to ensure that all of our students are being challenged in our classrooms, from our highest-performing students to our students that need a little bit of remediation. We have a STEM specialist this year, which is a fantastic addition. Our STEM specialist is providing hands-on curriculum in our classrooms on a daily basis. Our teachers can sign up to have the STEM specialist come into their classroom. What we are hearing from our teachers is they want to do a lot of hands-on activities, they really want to do a lot more labs, they want to do a lot more science that's hands-on and helps the kids really engage and builds that high level of engagement. But the problem that they were having is the transition times in between the classes. It made it very difficult for them to do all the setup and all the breakdown. So our STEM specialist travels to the different classrooms, and she's able to go into the classroom and set up all of the materials and make sure that those teachers can have the tools and the resources that they need, break it down, and also have two teachers available to help the students with the on, with the hands-on learning activities. So that's been a huge bonus. We do, we do have a teacher in the room that utilizes that extensively. We also, we also need to increase our parent engagement. That's something that Mr. Curly and I talk about all the time, and the teachers and I talk about all the time. We really need to provide our parents with tools and resources if they want to be working with their children more at home on specific skills. We need to be talking with our parents about, okay, here's some programs that you can use, here's a curriculum that we're using in our classrooms, here's how you can access this. If we have tutors that are working with the children, we need to make sure that we have online websites and links that they can go on there and get materials right away. So that's something that we're working on. Action steps for our grade-six and seven students, we've made a pretty, a couple of pretty big adjustments to our schedule this year in grade-six and seven. When we looked at our performance for all students, Mr. Curly, could you click all the way back to the overall scores for the middle school? No, you can keep, actually.
Right here?
Yeah, right there. Okay. Actually, we put, we put forward to the other, the other side. Keep going to math. Keep going to, sorry, for math students with disabilities as well.
That's it.
One more. We have the graph breakdown at the grade-six students. Yeah, that's the one. One more, one more quarter. Sorry about that.
Yep.
But this slide really tells us a lot. Because if you look at 2011, you can see our, from 2011 to 2012, our students with disabilities went from 43% to 81%. So when you see something like that, it's a question you really want to ask. What was the change? How come our number almost doubled from 2011 to 2012? And what happened in 2011 is we had the implementation of new curriculum frameworks. And so what that tells us as administrators is, was there a resource that was provided to those teachers in 2012 so that they could meet the needs and the change in curriculum? And when we dug a little deeper, we found out that our teachers were working extremely hard, but the curriculum resource that they had was not aligned to the Common Core and was not aligned to the Massachusetts frameworks. So this year, you could, you go back to action steps. This year, one more. So this year, we have curriculum textbooks that have been aligned to the Common Core, to the Common Core for grade-six. So the Go Math that we have all the way up to grade-five is now in grade-six, and we're working on having it in grade-seven. So I think that'll make a huge addition to our grade. So our ICE block in grade-six and seven, when I talked about how we changed the schedule, initially, last year, we had something called Focus Block. And Focus Block was about 50 minutes of time where the teachers had the opportunity to kind of work on, you know, whatever they wanted to work to enrich their curriculum. So if they had ELA Focus Block, they could work on additional ELA skills; if they had Science Focus Block, they could work on additional science skills. It was really a loose, loosely-framed, big block of time. And so what we did this year is we really structured that time, and we created something called ICE Block. ICE Block stands for Intervention, Challenge, and Exploration. So what we did is we looked at all of our students, we looked at their MCAS data, we looked at their SRI data, which is a literacy data, and we said, how can we help these students? And so we took any students that were in the needs improvement or warning category for MCAS and math or ELA, and we also looked at the students that were reading below average, and we put those students in intervention groups. So our students right now are getting direct, explicit intervention in math and ELA if they are, if they need it. So for 45 minutes a day, if you need literacy intervention, you go to a small group with about five to seven students. In that small group, you've been grouped by your data. So if you need help in comprehension, or you need help in fluency, you are with students that are reading at the exact same level as you, and they need work on the exact same skill. So that allows us to provide targeted, direct, explicit instruction to those students. If you're reading at grade level, or you're reading above grade level, grade level, but you're struggling in math, then you go into one of our Khan Academy programs. So in grade-six and seven, if you need help, we have three teachers that are teaching Khan Academy. One in sixth grade, two in seventh grade. That accounts for about over 50 students that are receiving direct, explicit math instruction right now on Khan Academy, and close to 75 to 80 students in each grade that are getting help with math, with literacy. So when we talk about professional development, I mentioned earlier that we have these, this new technology, we have these new resources, and we have teachers that are eager to use those resources. We have to be able to provide the training to our teachers to make sure that they can hit the ground running and feel comfortable with those resources. And so our next Professional Development Day, on November 4th, we actually polled all the teachers to get their feedback on what sort of professional development they would like help in. Would they like help in technology? Would they like help in providing accommodations with students with disabilities? Would they like help in MCAS math? Whatever, whatever their feedback was, we looked at it, and we designed individual PD groups that they'll go to and stations on their next PD day. So we're hoping that that will really benefit the teachers. Extended instructional time in core areas, we were able to extend the instructional time from 52 minutes to 60 minutes in the majority of our classes at the middle school level. Monthly math assessments, we're going to be doing monthly math assessments tied to the standards, and we're going to be checking in with our students to make sure that they're progressing where we need them to progress before we take the impact. Also, improved resource materials, I talked about that, the Go Math textbooks. Writing workshops, we're partnering with the Five District Partnership. They're bringing in a consulting company called Write Boston that has shown to increase ELA performance by about 35%. And we're going to be allowing our, you know, providing our teachers with the opportunity to go to these workshops if they, if they find that that would be something that's beneficial for them. So technology improvements, more access to technology. We have additional smart projectors that have been installed, 16 additional smart projectors installed in our classrooms, which make a very positive impact. And we also have additional inclusion classes in grade-six. So that's, that's my conclusion. We have many new and exciting initiatives. With additional support, we feel that our teachers will be able to make tremendous progress. Teacher support and increased focus on technology upgrades and access is, needs to be our significant area of focus. That's it. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions, please go ahead.
Yes, sir.
I think it's more of a general comment. Is it possible that we could come in, you know, on a periodic basis just to follow up on the action plans that, that are put in place just to see if, if you see some level of improvement? And then, if there's more resources that are needed, you can come back to us and tell us what you need?
Absolutely.
So if you see something that's, that's just not making it?
Yep.
That we have the ability to, to help you while we can?
Absolutely.
So maybe we could make that part of the academic, maybe quarterly or something, just to kind of follow up and make sure that everything's going the way it's supposed to go. Anything you need, just kind of give us a list and hit us with it so that we know that's what you need for success.
That would be terrific. And I know our teachers would really appreciate that as well. I know they're already generating their lesson cards right now, so we could need, I could list off some things right now that I think would be beneficial.
Go right ahead.
Computers, we need more, we need more computers. We have, we have the Chromebooks. We had a donation of about $10,000, and we purchased 29 Chromebooks. So we had another cart with 24 Chromebooks on it. If we could get two to three more carts, I think that would make, you know, if we could have one per grade level, I could see that as having a very positive impact on our students.
I just want to add in on that, I met with a fourth-grade teacher last, two weeks ago, Ms. Lutteiri, who did quite a bit of what Mr. Harity was talking about with Khan Academy, Ten Point, and worked continuously last year with her students in grade-four. And you see the overall growth. And she was so excited about the fact that it's working, you know, this is what's working. If we can keep going, each student is being individually challenged, I'm able to stay focused on that. And she said, the issue now is that we're expanding that out to everybody, and everybody's excited because we're seeing things that are working, but we need more, technically, more computers. So we did get them more. I am working currently to try to get another set of Chromebooks. One of the things I will tell you is that I'm working with the Five DP that we've applied for a technology grant as a group, each district applying for $100,000 apiece out of that grant because we can already show that we've matched it by the purchase of the iPads, which is good. And we would like that because that's the stuff that we're seeing is happening. So I, I hear what he's saying, and we are, we are working towards trying to increase, to at least have, our goal would be to have two per grade level, or two on the floor, two per grade level of carts for that, for the coming school.
Hi, thanks for the presentation. I was thinking a lot recently, and then as you were talking about balancing time and focusing on areas, and is there enough time in the day to do it? And then at the end, you had mentioned that you had extended instructional time for some classes.
Yep.
Where's that time coming from? And is there something else that's being lost as you're, as you're increasing time in other areas? Or how can we help you build more time into your day, or find more time to spend with the kids?
Yeah, so in our day, basically, we, our Focus Block was 50 minutes. So we shortened that, we shortened that Focus Block, or it was 52 minutes, we sho, actually, it wasn't, actually, it was 60 minutes, right? So it was 60 minutes. So we shortened that by 15 minutes. So our, our ICE Block this year is 45 minutes. And so during, during that time, students take, you know, a lot of different types of enrichment classes. So our students that, you know, have, that need remediation or need additional help get that. Our students that don't take classes like creative and critical thinking, Japanese history, they take personal finance, we have students in journalism, so we have a variety of other classes that we're adding. That's, that will allow us to really, you know, to do that.
And just to follow up with that, is, are you, have you felt an impact with class size at all, or difficulties with, with that?
Um, you know, we've added, we've added a lot of students to the school, but you really wouldn't know it, other than when the seventh graders and the fourth graders are in the hallway at the same time, and, you know, they look like giants. Other than that, you know, the building has such a great flow to it that we're able to really make work. And we designed the schedule, actually, Mr. Rowan, who's our music teacher, is, has some significant skills with designing schedules, and he really helped us out last year in the way that the schedule was designed, in the way that the times, you know, the seventh grade and the fourth grade and the, you know, fifth grade and the sixth grade are rarely in the hallways at the same time. So it allows us to have a really nice flow to the building. Our class sizes are about 24 students per class. They've been higher in the past, they've been, I mean, I could ask the lines, they've told me days where they've had 28 to, you know, 30 students in a classroom. So I think our class sizes right now are okay. Obviously, if they were lower, they would be better, but, you know, I think we're, we're doing pretty well right now.
Thanks.
Mr. Harity, you've been the principal for only a few months, so.
Yeah.
I think any criticism directed at you needs to be tempered somewhat. However, next year, that won't be the case.
Yeah.
And some of these scores are, they're bad.
Yeah.
And I'm very pleased to see that you brought an action plan with you this evening. And I agree with Vice Chairman Perrin completely that I too, as he said, I too would like to see you come back to let us know how those items are coming along, how those issues are developing, and what we can do to help you. You know, we have, we have a budget, we have to spend it on what we need.
Yeah.
And so there's, there's limited resources there. But we can't redirect or set next year's budget without you telling us what you need.
Absolutely.
And so, over the next year, please do let us know what you need, because we all need to get these scores better.
Yeah.
Than they are now. I have, I have another question.
Yes, sir.
Um, there were disabilities, as it applied to a group of students.
Yep.
Could you define what that means? Who is in such a category? What, is it everybody who's on an IEP?
Yep, so a student with disability is a student that's on an individual education program plan, so that would be any student on an IEP.
Which is quite a broad group of children.
It is, it is a very broad group of children. And, you know, the thing that we really need to remember when we talk about students with disabilities, and I was a little hesitant, when, to be honest, I was a little hesitant to, to present some of this data, because, you know, being a special education teacher and, you know, going through a special education program, and, which I have a master's degree, and that was something that, to me, what I really don't want to happen is our special education students, you know, any sort of blame gets put on these students, because it's, you know, it's not our special education students that are bringing our scores down, because they're not bringing our scores down at all. It's just, our students in comparison to other special education students throughout the state aren't doing as well as they can. And so we need to really, the reason that I decided to, to share that data is because it's not a huge group of students, and it's something that's really manageable, and it's something that we can really make a tremendous impact if we really target our instruction and provide these students with what they need. And so for me, it's something that's, that's really exciting, because we can really target our data and really identify those students and make sure that we're monitoring them and following up on them, and, and really engaging with their parents and getting them all the support that they need. And we've seen in science that, you know, when we get them in those classrooms, and we get them, you know, with peer role models, and we get them to succeed, that they can achieve at the same level as anybody else. And so that's something that, that I really want to make sure that everybody's clear
You feel comfortable with your action plan, that you'll be able to make these significant improvements, apparently? You seem excited about it.
I am, I mean, I'm really passionate about it. You know, Mike and Bernadette can tell you that last year, you know, I was looking at the schedule, and I was really frustrated a lot of the time, because I thought that there was some downtime in there, and our students weren't getting what they needed. And so we really worked with the special education teachers, and we really worked with the special education chair in our building to, to change a lot of IEPs and to try to make sure that we're, you know, doing what we needed to do. But it's going to be a lot of hard work, and, you know, I'm not, you know, Mr. Curly's phenomenal, I think together and with our teachers, we can do it.
Okay. I spoke to Superintendent Bacerro, and we were hoping maybe that in January, it could be on the agenda so that we can just track the progress of the action plan. And you can put together whatever needs that you see, or whatever we're lacking, so that you're, we can support you in your action plan. If it needs to change, it changes, so.
That, that sounds great.
Sometime in January, if it comes on the agenda.
And I could even give you some data too, because we'll have some data as far as, you know, how our students are doing with their literacy levels, being in the targeted intervention, how they're doing with their math, and, you know, really seeing if they're making the progress that we need to see.
Excellent.
You can, you can put as many things on your action plan as you can think of, but if you don't have the support and the tools to follow through.
Yep.
And that's what the January date is. It's not to say, is it fixed?
Yep.
It's, you know, where are we in the plan, and what do you need to make that plan work?
You have a sympathetic audience here, use us.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if I, this is a good question for you, Mr. Bacerro, but have we done the staff education for the bullying program yet, or is that in the next?
We worked, we've started it in some areas, in some particular buildings, but we haven't begun it yet at the high school level, only because we're trying to get all of the other PD in with the iPads.
Right, there was that program that we had.
Yeah, always.
Read on, and I didn't know if that was coming in November.
So we're working on that to happen.
I could, I can comment on that too, because the last week of October, we're doing an anti-bullying awareness week, and we're implementing a lot of the Second Step. Second Step is a program that we had talked about, making sure, we had, we had had the program, but we just were not implementing it with fidelity. So we're rolling out a week of anti-bullying awareness activities, and Second Step is, is our resource for providing a lot of those activities that week. our resource for providing a lot of those activities that week. And then we'll continue to do that on a monthly basis, where one, you know, once per month, we'll have a lesson that we're doing in our classroom around, in our homerooms, around anti-bullying, and how students can, you know, making sure students are aware of all the definitions, and how they report things, and make sure teachers are aware of it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Harity, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Curly?
Thank you.
Next item is the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I'd like to thank the Arthur T. Cummings Administration for their wonderful report tonight, and really breaking down the details for us, so that you could see exactly what our needs are, and where we're moving forward. And I also appreciate the school committee being sympathetic to our needs as we move forward, and trying to give our students what we can. First thing I did want to clarify, and I know that the newspaper reporter is here tonight, I just wanted to make sure that I let her know that I appreciated the great fact that the William P. Gorman Fort Banks was declared a Level One, however, they haven't tested yet. So they're just, they're what they call non-applicable until next year. It's that they have third graders now there, and so next year, they'll be rated on there. So I wanted to make sure that the community didn't think that the William P. Gorman was at that status of Level One, because right now, it's not there yet. That is, it's just that they've never been given a status, because they never had third grade. So I don't know if there was a confusion on that, but I wanted to clarify that publicly tonight. In regards to the Winthrop High School, this past week, we held a high school college fair that had over 100 students and parents participating in. The first part of the fair was in regards to tuition, scholarships, and financial aid, and all of that, which I found was, that the person who spoke, I was told, was very good, that brought it down to layman's terms, parents seemed to have a good understanding of how the funding works, and how to apply for financial aid. And then we had 25 colleges or universities here, and students were able, students and parents were able to go to the tables, and talk to colleges, and get paraphernalia from them, and give it a little introduction, which was great. We hadn't had that opportunity for a long time, and I was glad to see that. We also had every sophomore and junior last week took the PSATs. That's in, you know, you may recall, years ago, when we took the PSATs, you took them on a Saturday morning, and it was only those who chose to take them, or could afford to take them. Now the school purchases and pays for every child in the sophomore and junior here to take the PSATs. So we will, we'll hear back from that at some point, how our students did, and that is in preparation, as SATs are now, are currently starting to happen for, most likely seniors who want to take SATs again, for their college applications. And that will be happening. Also, at the high school this past week, our girls volleyball team made it to the tournament with their win over St. Mary's. They're in their third year of their program, and we're very excited for them to have acknowledged that they've moved on to the tournament, which will begin, I believe, next Thursday. They will begin, I'm not sure if we'll be home while we're away, we'll find out all of that information. Tonight, I was watching them in there beat Revere, so it was kind of a good thing. As well as, our high school football team is still undefeated. They're 6-0, they beat Classical last weekend. This Friday night, they will be playing at Danbury's. The winner will be, if, if we win, we will be the sole conference champion of the Northeast Conference Small Division. If we were not to win, we would share that conference championship with the team Danbury's that we're playing. So we would like to be a little selfish here, and not have to share that at all. We are playing in a playoff game a week from Friday, and this, it looks to be right now that we will be home, but we will, we'll see how that all unravels after this week. The Arthur T. Cummings had recent elections, and I'd like to congratulate those, their student council elections at the Arthur T. Cummings School. Grade four representatives were Madison Stiglitz, Andrew Dagnot, Jack Hayes, Joel Johnson, Abby Holmes, and Julia Holmes. Grade five representatives, Emily Rodriguez, Sean Montgomery, Christopher Gibbons, Ty Kalinda, Mia Martucci, and Maggie Zogazi. Sixth grade, they follow more in the tradition of a president, vice president, secretary, treasurer. Your president is Bobby Hubert, vice president John Wengoni, secretary Rachel Farley, treasurer Grace Galoris. And seventh grade, the president Noah Evangelista, vice president Ryan Parker, secretary Michael Chavez, and treasurer Devin Barry. Like to congratulate those students on their campaign. I'd also like to congratulate all the students who ran for office. I know that they had put together, it was great, I saw pictures coming in from Mr. Harity, of the different slogans that they had up on the walls. And it's really important that our students learn how voting and government, student government, work. And last year, we incorporated the student government into our selection process, with us in regards to the new principal. And so, Mr. Harity, that was probably your toughest battle, or that one, wasn't it?
Definitely was, yeah.
Yes.
Came prepared.
And they were ready for you when you came back. So we're very happy about that. The, as I mentioned earlier, in the five district partnership, we are applying for a tech grant, and so we're hopeful, and we believe that as a group, we have a better power, because we could also have a better buying power. The five DP is, we're, we're moving forward on a lot of avenues, and at some point, one of the things, not in the November 3 meeting, we have Ms. Pearson, who will be presenting on grade three MCAS, and as well as their action steps for grade three. But one of the meetings, either November 17th, or in December, I'd like to do a presentation on the five district partnership, bring in our executive director, so you can see all of the wonderful work that is going on for Winthrop as part of this group, so, under the academics as well. There is a free field trip for the Cummings students this Saturday, to Spectacle Island on Saturday, October 25th, from 9:00 AM till 3:00 PM, for students in grade six and seven for the Arthur T. Cummings. I know that, that Ms. Armstead, I believe, offers...
Sponsored by the Winthrop Police.
Right, sponsored by the Winthrop Police Department. Do you want to just say a couple of words on that, just so that...
Yeah, Detective Armstead had, had come to me, and said, you know, we'd really like to do, police department would really like to sponsor a field trip, and, you know, make sure that we're really building strong ties with the students at a young age, and make sure that they feel always coming to us, and, you know, comfortable coming to us. And so, I'm gonna be going as well, we're gonna be going next Saturday, and going out to Spectacle Island, and having some fun, so...
Well, it's, what's nice is that we're, that partnership of the resource officer, and coming into the schools, and that partnership of, of police with our students, this is, this is a great opportunity, and I'm very happy to see it come to life. And I want to give special thanks to Detective Armstead, who brought it to my attention about a month ago, and said, "What do you think?" And I said, "Okay, well, let's see, how would we be able to do this?" I said, "The kids have to be back by a certain time, because of the buses." And she said, "Mr. Masero, it's for Saturday." I went, "For Saturday? Well, then, by all means, no problem." That works out even better. So that's the type of stuff that we like to see. So, the, they do have the, they're gonna have their first yearbook and chorus meetings have taken place at the ATC, and this is gonna be their first time they're gonna have an after-school chorus, so we're excited about that as well. So there's lots of stuff, and as he talked about earlier, we had the smart projectors were put into the classrooms, and so we're moving in on that. And then, of course, I believe, oh, my final, on the school update, we have completed the peer, GeoPiers drilling. So the good news is, is that there shouldn't be any more drilling over in that area now. And now they are beginning the, it's always amazing how, see, I got rid of the sound tonight, so we wouldn't have to hear this. We are now beginning the foundation. So the foundation should be laid by December 31st, and then you will start to see, so what you'll see now, as you drive by a lot, you'll see a lot of, you can see that they framed it up, we're about 15 feet high, or, we're actually at, sorry, 14 feet, and then the foundation of the ground will bring it to 15 feet, 15.2, when they lay the cement and all of that. So that's going to be the first level of the construction. And then after that, so afterwards, then you'll start to see things start to go up, which is the steel will start in January through April. So we're, we're well on our way of this project. October ends a week from Friday, which means we're now down to 20 months. So each month goes away, and I say, another month passes, and we're getting closer and closer to this project. Which is, when you think about it, a year ago, at this time, we weren't even sure we were gonna have this project. And so, a year from the election day, within the year, we'll have already be laying the foundation down on this project, which I, I think goes out to show you how great the school building assistance committee has been working on this project, as well as, I have to give kudos right now to Gilvane, Skanska, and HMFH for their great work that they're doing. I want to remind everybody to watch, or please feel free to come, all our school building assistance committee meetings, whether they're subcommittees, which the construction subcommittee is the hot subcommittee right now, with all of the issues that are going on with the building, those are open to the public. So if you have any questions on when they are, you can see them on the website, or you can certainly check with Town Hall, the town clerk's office, and they will let you know when those are posted. That's all I have.
Thank you. Questions for the superintendent? No, we can go right to personnel, are there any personnel issues?
All I have on personnel is people that we've brought on board from the last time that we met. We had Christina Deeb, who is an ESP at the Arthur T. Cummings. Benjamin Costaval is a new bus driver that we're going to have for special act, field trips and after-school events, so it's good, we're happy, we have three bus drivers now, we feel that's, that's a good move, in the right direction of areas that we need. France Saint-Fleur is the school bus monitor. And my recent last hire for the part-time office aide at the central office, you may recognize this name, Mary Lou Osborne, is now a part of the staff, and I couldn't think of anybody better than to put over there, who is very dedicated in her work ethics, and understands our business very well, and knows what needs to happen. So we're excited to have her join, as we are everybody who joins us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Next item is the warrant. We have a warrant this evening, SVW15-6, the amount of $296,286.03. Motion by President Gil.
Second.
Second by Ms. Sullivan. Are there any questions or comments on the warrant? We shall vote. All in favor of casting the warrant, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. Next is the payroll warrant, dated September 10th, 2014, in the amount of 555, I'm sorry, I'm gonna say that again, $557,457.25.
Motion.
Motion by Vice Chairman Perrin, second by President Gil. Any questions on the payroll warrant? We'll vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Give me just one second, please. We have a policy in the school committee now that, because we have had some problems in the past, getting payment, once buildings have been used, we now require that a check come with the request. And that policy applies to everyone. The issue we need to deal with tonight is that the town of Winthrop is legally not able to do that. The laws of the Commonwealth prohibit a municipality from presenting a check with their request. They can, however, present a purchase order. How am I doing so far, Mr. Gordon?
Everything's good so far.
And so, I think what we need to do in the long term is to make sure our policy reads so that we are able to accept purchase orders from town departments. All others, paycheck. That's the long term. In the short term, we do have a request from Parks and Recs to use school facilities. And as I said, they cannot follow the policy and give us a check. They can give us a purchase order, however. And so, I would like to ask the committee if, for the next, this is October, perhaps, I would ask the committee, not perhaps, I will ask the committee in a motion to allow the town of Winthrop, for the remainder of 2014, to reserve space in the schools with a purchase order. That would be, that will require a 75% vote of this committee tonight to do that, because it would be an override of our policy. And I ask for that to be for the remainder of the calendar year, so that we have time to change our policy, so that from then on, a purchase order will just be part of the policy.
When you say calendar year, are you talking calendar year through December of 2014, or through the school year?
Not the academic year, the calendar year.
Okay, thank you.
If I give the policy subcommittee until next June to do it, they will get it done on June 30th. We will get it, I should say we, I'm on the policy subcommittee. So I'll try to put a shorter deadline on that, for the end of the calendar year, 2014.
Motion to allow purchase orders through December 31st, for the reserved building for the town of Winthrop.
Second. Motion by President Gil, second by Vice Chairman Perrin.
For discussion.
Sorry.
Would that also include student organizations, where you have, like we had the, I forget what class came in for that show that we were gonna present, where they didn't have a check in hand? Is that something that's also gonna be allowed? I'm just thinking the internal thing, the students' organizations, a lot of times, they don't have the check in hand.
This would only be for the government of the town of Winthrop.
Do I have to address that at the policy subcommittee?
Yes, yes. Any other questions or comments? Again, we need 75% vote to override this for the remainder of the calendar year.
Just for my own information, the, so, we couldn't now vote to change the policy, it has to come through the policy subcommittee?
I would recommend it, so that we could write the policy, and then we would need to bring it for a first reading and a second reading, and then a vote to change the policy itself.
I'm definitely in favor of allowing town departments to pay, to provide a purchase order at the time of the request. I think there's so much, there's few levels to go through, to have somebody write a check out, and I know that the town's not gonna write a check for a request. So if that would allow the students, and the children, and the community to use our buildings, that's a fair way to go. So I would be voting yes on that.
Well, I should say...
This motion is just for town departments?
I know, I know, that's what I was saying, for town departments to provide a PO at request.
If we do not pass this by 75%, then, basically, the town of Winthrop will not be able to use any school facilities, because they won't be able to pay for them according to our policy.
Right.
And therefore, they can't use them. So if you do feel that the town should be able to use school facilities, and I do, certainly, I will be voting yes, then I urge you to vote yes on this.
I think it would be hard pressed to not vote yes, when we violate the laws.
Well, we wouldn't violate the law, we just would not allow them to use our facilities.
Yes.
That would be in keeping with the law.
Oh?
Okay.
Motion.
We have a motion and a second? Any other questions, discussions? Ms. Hames, would you call the rule, please?
Yes, Mr. Gil?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Ms. Polino?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes.
Mr. Scamro?
Mr. Scramro.
Yes, thank you. Next is the use of buildings. We have four requests, one from the Arthur T. Cummings PTO, the boys' basketball, and two from Parks and Recs. And now that we have voted to allow Parks and Recs to pay with a purchase order, I'll make a motion that we approve all four requests with one vote.
Second.
Second by President Gil. Any questions or discussions?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Can you just add, on the, on the Parks and Rec, can you just add in your motion that pending they give us a purchase order, that Gil will approve it?
We don't have a purchase order on it yet.
Right, because we didn't, we didn't give the purchase order yet, because we didn't know if the policy was going to approve. But I just would like, I would request that you put it in there, pending the purchase order, that it will be approved.
I think we will need to do that if they're going to use it, because they, one of them starts on November 7.
Right, right. So, I mean, we'll, we, I would imagine we can get a purchase order tomorrow, that won't be the issue, but I just want to make sure that they know that that's the case on your, to protect what you just voted to.
Very good, then that would be part of the motion that pending the purchase order.
Right, for the Parks and Rec. The others, you have the checks, you can take it all in one.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. Next is mandatory background checks. I think we're still working on--
Still working.
Still working on that. Next is--
We didn't meet, just so everybody knows, we didn't meet, but we're at another--
Yes.
All right.
We continue to make progress.
We do.
We're not quite at the end yet. Next is the Shore Collaborative. You all have seen the, the Articles of Agreement from Shore Collaborative. They have changed slightly, and we have a summary sheet that we all got stating what those changes are. And if the town of Winthrop wishes to remain a part of the Shore Collaborative, then we need to accept the Articles of Agreement as they now are, and I will need to, I need to have the committee's permission to, to sign the agreement that we accept these articles. And so I would very much appreciate it if the committee would approve the articles as they have been changed, and make a motion that we accept the articles and authorize the chairperson to sign the acceptance of the changes. Second by Mr. Perrin. Any questions?
Does, okay, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Recommendations for superintendent yourself?
I have read through, I have read the, the summary, I have read the agreement. I think that we should agree to the articles and continue as a member of the Shore Collaborative.
Thank you. I would concur.
Thank you. We will vote now. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. Next item is the Class of 2017 fundraiser iPad screen protectors.
Great fundraiser.
Anybody wish to speak on this?
I can read the proposal if you would say. So, Class of 2017 fundraiser, Winthrop High School Class of 2017 would like to sell screen protectors for our new school iPads we just received. We would like to start selling this project, a product, as soon as this proposal gets approved. We would like to sell them for $5 at all for lunches, all the money raised will go towards the Class of 2017. We believe that this is a fundraiser, would be a great asset to our grade this year and beneficial to all the students. So this is a project by the class, so it would be the class advisors who are organizing this. 2017 class is our current sophomores. So, and for those who do on the iPad, it would be additional, people, kids could buy additional screen protectors, as you see, they can get pretty much marked up a lot, and sometimes--
Very quickly.
Right, so.
Is there a motion?
What?
Motion by President Gil, second by Ms. Sullivan. Any questions or comments? We'll vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. Public comment? Public relations? Mr. Superintendent?
You have two items here that were in the packet, but there is the Winthrop High School Class of 2016 Annual Country Fair, which will be held on Thursday evening, November 13th. That's at the St. John's, the Evangelist School Hall. I know that's a traditional event, people enjoy that, and each year, it's always the junior class is the current class that handles that event. It's from 7:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., door prizes, split the pot, raffles, raffles, and more raffles. If you need any information, you can contact Karen Perrin or Kathy Norris. They are the folks who are the class advisors, and they'll be more than happy to guide anybody there. And also the junior class, because I think last year is the sophomore class, had a very successful Mike's Pastry event. Winthrop High School junior class is taking orders for Thanksgiving pies, and the difference this year is you can place your order by November 18th and pick up your pies on November 25th, but they will deliver your pies for an extra fee. So if you want your pies delivered between 6:00 and 8:00 that night, you can, for an additional $2 fee. So if you need flyers for this, just go to the high school, they'll have them at the high school. Make any check payable to Winthrop High School, that's important. But this is another great event. I know last year, I didn't, it saved me from having to pay. That's all I have on the public relations. Thank you.
I just wanted to follow up on the country fair. They're still accepting raffles, raffle donations, so you can get in touch with Karen Perrin, my wife, or Kathy Norris, and there's a free turkey giveaway every half hour. So if you want your turkey for Thanksgiving, you might win one by going to this event. So again, they're still soliciting for donations for raffles. It's a fundraiser that'll go towards all the senior activities, the Class of 2016.
Thank you. President Gil?
I just wanted to comment on the progress at the new high school. It's very enthused about it, it seems like it's moving on schedule, and it's going to open on time. That's good news, and I give a great deal of credit to our school building assistance committee. Their efforts have been tireless, and their accomplishments have been tremendous, and I can recognize that as a very happy result. And I also, on the floor, wanted to recognize our school resource officer and the school resource officer program being a combined effort of the council and the school department to put that together, and I'm hearing wonderful things, including tonight's trip to Spectacle, tonight's mention of the trip to Spectacle Island, so those are two things that we need to be happy about.
Detective Armstead--
Mr. Harrowdy, you are on the stump now to get these scores. We'll be watching you. Excuse me.
Ms. Sullivan?
I just wanted to thank everybody, especially President Gil and Mr. Masero for helping out with Walk to School Day a couple weeks ago. It ended up being a beautiful fall, sunny day, a lot of families participated, so thank you for participating in that. The Gorman Fort Banks PTO is sponsoring a paint night on November 7th. You can get information on the Fort Banks PTO Facebook page or by contacting any of the officers. It's Friday, November 7th, it's a lot of fun, and just want to wish the football team and Coach Driscoll a lot of luck in closing out the season on Friday with another win, undefeated, in Danbury's hopefully, so good luck to the players.
Ms. Polino?
No. I'll say.
While we're thanking people, I want to thank my friend Karen Chavez for all the work that she does for the town of Winthrop. She sits on so many committees, she goes to so many meetings, she does so much work. Thank you, Ms. Chavez, appreciate it. Anything else this evening?
Motion.
Motion to adjourn from President Gil.
Second.
Second from Ms. Sullivan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. Go adjourn.
Thank you.